All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Belvidere City Council Committee of the Whole of December 11, 2023. If the clerk will help me out with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Nine present.
Okay. Under public comment, we have two registered this evening. Alderman Matt Flurry is here this evening. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to talk about the upcoming tax levy. Trying to keep this short as possible. I know we're going to have more discussion next week. Just wanted to share some information to think about in regards to the tax levy increase. So as we've seen in the papers and talked about last week, we heard that it's a 17% increase, which when you hear 17%, that sounds extremely scary and it sounds like thousands of dollars. The actual dollar amount is $99.54 increase from last year. So again, it is an increase, but I don't think as scary sounding as when you say 17%. Now, both of these numbers are factual and true, but I just wanted to take a moment maybe to share a personal story about percentages. So last year, my wife was diagnosed with cancer. Fast forward to the end, she's okay now and doing great. But with that cancer, she had had surgery and then several weeks of radiation, and then there was discussion about having to take some medication that could have some really adverse side effects. And as we all talked about, you know, you never want the cure to be worse than the disease. As the doctor explained it, he said that it'd be by taking this medicine, it would cut her chances of cancer again by 50%. And so when you hear 50%, you're thinking, well, you know, no matter what the side effects are, that seems like a reasonable thing to encounter to keep it from reoccurring at 50%. As we had further discussion, the fact is that her chances of getting cancer again were 6%, and that 50% cuts it down to 3%. So still a decrease, but I think, you know, it changes your perspective on how you're going to make decisions, whether you want to take a medicine that's going to severely alter your life or not. So again, same facts, just different perspectives. So speaking of perspectives, so that $99 broken down, that's $8.30 per month, or $1.91 per week, or 27 cents a day. So obviously, no one's ever, you know, raising taxes is never, never a popular idea, but the fact remains there is a cost to run in the city. You know, this year, we just negotiated four new contracts. We have the ambulance, and we have a $965,000 shortfall. You know, the cost of everything does go up. You know, as I've talked to my neighbors and fellow citizens and explained the actual costs, everyone that I've talked to, and there's over 15 now, that's not everybody. There's still a lot of people in my ward that I haven't spoken to, but everyone I've talked to, once I explain the cost, they say that seems reasonable, and I understand there's a cost of run the city. And when we talk about run the city, you know, it sounds like an abstract idea, but the city is, you know, the people in this room, but more importantly, it's, you know, the firefighters aren't here, the police officers, people from Public Works that plow our streets at 2:00 in the morning when we're all sleeping and get to work the next day. So, you know, that, like, I think you can check me, Shannon, but around 80% of our actual budget is salary. So, I mean, when we talk about the city, we're talking about people. And so it does cost money to, you know, pay them fair wages and, you know, to keep the services that we do have. So again, obviously, others may disagree with me on what the best course of action is in regards to the tax levy, whether we should leave it at no change, or increase, or somewhere in between, and I'm open to all ideas. I just ask that next week, when we have a discussion, that we can try to have a discussion without insulting each other's integrity, intelligence, or competency. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Flurry, for that. And we have Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. Good evening. I felt it necessary to address public comments made at the city council meeting, both by the public and the mayor himself. So I'm taking this time to share my thoughts with the council, as well as the residents of this fine city. During a portion of Mayor Morris's opening remarks of the meeting, just minutes after praying for compassion, patience, and understanding from his position as chairman, he publicly shamed and berated two of the aldermen currently serving on the council, who, by the way, won their elections and were appointed to their seats, not by the mayor, but by the voters of their respective wards, because he disagrees with their levy perspectives was greatly distressing. However, because he did not limit his comment to a fiscal policy disagreement, but took the time to essentially campaign for his friend Clayton Stevens, a man I might add voted out by his own constituents, as they sought not more of the same, but rather change for Ward One, for appointment by himself to an open seat on the council, I can only conclude that the sentiment runs deeper than policy. Our mayor seems to have a personal vendetta and seeks retribution whenever possible on an alderman who has obviously served his constituents well, considering he is currently serving his fourth elected term here. Alderman Snow and I have consistently, over the years that we have served on this council together, disagreed on multiple issues, but it's my opinion that stooping to the level of downright bullying is unbecoming the office of mayor. I worked hard to defeat the previous mayor in his reelection bid, because I considered him a bully who viewed the council as a mere inconvenience. I did not do so, only to help elect the same. And I too am questioning my own judgment. Moving on to the public comments, I'd like to set the record straight on some of the misconceptions mentioned concerning the 2024 tax levy discussion that garnered applause. First, when Alderman Snow introduced the motion, he did so explicitly stating for discussion purposes. Second, Alderman Snow and Alderman Albertini did not single-handedly pass the motion. It was subsequently discussed and voted on after discussion by those present at council, and the majority ruled with five of the eight council members in attendance voting in favor. During said discussion and before the vote, I noted a pertinent question asked by Alderman Brereton. What percentage is our shortfall? To which our finance director responded 18.4%, a whole percentage point above the ask of 17.3. Alderman Snow continued the discussion by asking if the shortfall included the police and fire pension increases of $362,000 we face in this budget, to which she promptly responded, no, adding that we also need to keep in mind an IMRF rate increase, an insurance rate increase for Public Works employees, union contract wage increases, as well as non-union employee wage increases, increases in the cost of contracted materials and labor, and unknown, virtually unpredictable at this point in time, ambulance revenues as well. This tells me that even with a 17.3% increase, we will continue to sustain a shortfall for budgeting purposes. As we are all keenly aware of the positive impact on projects and equipment the city desperately needed from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds, we were able to spend during this fiscal year, as well as Build Back Better grant funding procured for us by our state representatives Dave Vella and Steve Stottlemann, we must also understand that those funding sources will not be coming to us in fiscal year 2025. And the remaining ARPA funds we have left have been set aside to help cover any impending ambulance service costs this year. I believe the taxpayers have been misled into thinking that a 17% raise in the city's portion of the levy somehow equates to a 17% raise in their property taxes overall. This is false. So let's break it down. The property taxes collected by the county are divvied up between all taxing bodies, including the school district, park district, county, and more. Much like a pie, the city only gets a slice. Since the library does not receive its own slice of the pie, it is dependent upon a small share of the city's slice for its funding. By raising the city's levy, the corresponding pie becomes only slightly larger, but it ensures the city is getting its appropriately sliced sized slice in order to function as it should. Our finance director was openly honest when answering the question posed to her as to the dollar amount homeowners would be affected by the raise, when she stated that property taxes for a home valued at $100,000 would go up $100 next year. If you break that down into a monthly cost, as Alderman Flurry said, it equals approximately $8 per month. The city, considering the city has foregone raising its levy, with the exception of a tiny amount last year since 2017, five straight years of zero increase, this raise actually reflects an increase in the monthly budget of a household with a $100,000 valued home that is equivalent to $1.60 a month over a six-year timeframe. As I mentioned earlier, the city's costs have substantially increased, and since we are fresh out of fairy dust, our revenue must increase as well in order to sustain the services we render. Further playing, the proverbial kick the can down the road game will only lead to cutting services, cutting staff, taking from our reserves, which are already depleting, or potentially all of the above. This, in my opinion, would be irresponsible and a disservice to the residents of Belvidere. We do not frivolously spend taxpayer money. Our Public Works Director couldn't be more frugal and has operated for years while being short-staffed. Abby, our Assistant City Clerk, as well as Gina, our Community Development Planner, wear many hats. Unlike most municipalities the size of Belvidere, the mayor and city attorney have no assistants. We have no Assistant Fire Chief, and our police administrators are underpaid. The mayor himself, as well as a public commenter, only furthered my argument when they stated that the revenue increases we will inevitably be collecting due to recent growth here are still years away. Growth, I might add, that has come to us with the help and endurance of growth dimensions and the work they do to market Belvidere and attract business and economic investment. The so-called pork that Alderman Snow was wrongfully accused of adding to this budget plan was for the purpose of appending the money back that was extracted from growth dimensions in the foregoing year, under the guise of revisiting it this year to restore it to its previous level of funding. So that addition was anything but a disingenuous one for discussion. I hope this brings a better understanding of items your elected officials must consider when debating a tax levy increase. Will the $8 a month increase be passed to renters? Most likely, just as it is passed to the homeowners and landlords. But as reiterated by the woman who spoke from four seasons, lot rent there has gone up a consistent 21% per year, even without any levy increases, and nobody's rent or escrow account has remained stagnant. Seven years ago, the city adopted a pay me now or pay me later strategy. By opting for the pay me later, Belvidere homeowners were able to save some money in the short term, but eventually, the bill comes due, and that day has come. Hopefully, city revenues boosted by new projects to be completed within the upcoming years will enable us to once again forego raising the levy for an extended period. But for now, we're playing catch-up, and unfortunately, it comes with a price. I would also add that the current inflation rate is not, as the mayor would have you believe, 8.5% to 10%, but actually 3.2%. And all economic indicators point to a soft landing that avoids a recession. I also ask you to keep in mind that the mayor's analogy of unprecedented increase due to part of 10-year rate of 13.6% per 9%, includes six of these years represented zero increase. So if you take 13.69 divided by the four years it did increase, that equals 3.49 yearly. So 3.49 times the six that the levy remained at zero would actually reflect a 20.4% increase to date. That was averted. That would be present today. Thank you.
Well, I might add that when I pray, beginning at this city council, you left out, I prayed for courage, and I pray for courage that the city council and myself make sure that there is no vendetta against the taxpayers. We should not pile on the taxpayers. And to take the 10-year average that you talked about, only quote, "four years that were increased," which I believe, Alderwoman Freeman, you voted to freeze it probably every year during your term. So I guess, you know, and I wasn't here at that time either, but believe me, we do not have to increase our levies 17.33%. That is taking advantage of the taxpayers. And I would again mention that our revenue is not years away. We have, we are going to have revenue here that are going to fill some of these gaps. This isn't the sky is falling, although you may think it is. It is not. And 17.33% certainly is way over the top, in my opinion. I'm a taxpayer here, like everybody else. I am fortunate, but I don't think you try and get it all back at once anyhow. I don't think you take 10 years of bad decisions, six years maybe that were bad decisions, and then you try and get them back in one year, and you do it at the expense of a vendetta against the taxpayers. That's not right. It's not fair, and it's mean-spirited, and it's out of touch. Also, regarding me, about what I had said, you bet I'm going to represent the taxpayers. I am going to point out whenever I think that, you know, the council's being led astray to think that there's a catastrophe happening. We are never in danger of laying off employees, so that rhetoric is totally out of line. There's nobody, there's no, there's nobody laying off employees here. We're not in any danger of that, nor will we be. And the 17.33% will do nothing at all to prevent that, because it's not going to happen. All it will do is it will cost the taxpayers more money than what they should have to pay. So, and the other thing is, I don't think you were even at the discussion, the eight aldermen. I think you were absent. Yes, you were. And so you have to be present in order to make your point here at the council level. So you come lately here, and you have an opportunity, though, at committee levels or in the, or previously, to be able to state that. Also, you may think that I am mean with pointing out Alderman Snow or Alderman Albertini. Those are facts. That's what the motion was. That's what the second was. And actually, the council decided that they were going to go for it, and that's a mistake. It's a mistake on the taxpayers, and it's not necessary. The city is in great financial shape. We will see revenue as we see some of these projects be built out, but there's no reason to inflict more pain. And I don't know where you get your 3.5% or 3.25%. I think anybody who goes to the grocery store, anybody goes buys and purchases anything, I think they know, they realize that that is just not true. They realize that they're paying much, much more in an inflated market. It may be 3.24% now, after you've already piled on 6.5% to 8.5% on, on people that are trying to buy consumer goods. Yeah, it may be, but the bottom line is, everything costs more, and we don't need to do that, and we certainly shouldn't. And it's my job to make sure that I lobby on behalf of the taxpayers, not against them, and I'll continue to do that. So moving on, public forum, we have none. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, building, planning, zoning, unfinished business, we have none. Item two, building, planning, zoning, new business. Item A, building, planning, update. Mr. Countryman?
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of November, we issued 77 permits. Eleven of those were commercial, 66 residential, for a stated value of construction just under half a million dollars. Some of the projects going forward throughout the city, as you can see, maybe Dunkin' Donuts is at footings. The fuel center got their first lift on the front storefront of the project. The curbs are done. That project is moving forward. We issued a permit for the daycare facility on Pearl Street. We have plans being reviewed for the old Lung Fung for same use. General Mills has received their CFO. The project is completed. We also issued Club Car Wash. That project will move forward. In regards to property maintenance, staff issued 14 notices to businesses that continuously use feather signs and let them know that they're only allowed 60 calendar days per year, one sign per 200 feet of frontage. And as the time passes, staff will enforce the feather signs. And that's all I have. I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for Kip? Alderwoman Mahal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. How many new residential, or new construction for residential permits were pulled?
Probably year-to-date, just under 20.
Any other questions? Alderman Snow?
This is more of a comment. I saw Mr. Wilcox pulling a sign the other day out of the terrace for the furniture store going out of business, and I gave kudos to that, because obviously, we can get inundated with all the signs in the terrace that don't belong. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Kip, I have a question about the homes that are over by Lincoln School. I thought they were homes to be sold, but somebody told me, are they Section 8 homes?
They do not qualify for Section 8. They are being rented, or if they do sell, they're selling them lower.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Countryman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item B, planning, zoning, department update. Ms. Delrose?
Hello. So there was no public hearing this month. I'm not sure about next month. I've been taking a lot of phone calls and handing out applications, but tomorrow's the deadline, so we'll see what comes in. Site plan review was the daycare center. Zoning letters are still holding pretty steady. Hometown Christmas kept staff busy, just trying to get city hall aspects of that under control. And it ended up, although the weather was pretty rough at the beginning of the night, it was a pretty successful night. It's great for the downtown businesses. Have had several phone calls with the consultants for the comprehensive plan, talking about the direction that they're taking it in. Right now, our comp plan really pigeonholes the city, and the way they're working the new one, it's going to be flexible, not to the point where we don't have a say, but to the point where we can consider a development in its merits versus it being an instant no or something. So they are hoping to have a draft to me by the end of the, the year, and then we can start having more meetings after that draft is reviewed internally. So be prepared for probably another meeting, and then a couple of public meetings. So excited in the direction that's going. Otherwise, sending out downtown facade letters to those projects that have not submitted for reimbursement, to remind them of their timeline, and attended a watership, watershed stewardship program that the city needs to hold for their MSF permit. And then although these are not in November, like Kip said, the Lung Fung restaurant's getting remodeled. They're actually, they had a facade grant to repaint the brick. They're now expanding that exterior remodel to include larger windows, so it looks more appropriate for downtown buildings, which is great. Have been talking to a potential new user for the Happy Walk restaurant, and according to the Facebook stalking, the brewery downtown looks like it's coming along really nicely, and they're just about done with their remodeling.
Any questions for Ms. Delrose? Alderwoman Frank?
You brought up a topic that I've been thinking about quite a bit. You brought up the windows on Lung Fung. There's some windows in town that still have the black windows. I think that's against our ordinance. No? Not any? Didn't that used to be?
No, that, mm, no. So in the downtown overlay district, which is our historic aspects of downtown, you cannot brick in a window, but you can put an opaque film inside the window. So we don't want you bricking them in. We don't want you boarding them up, but you can put an opaque film on the inside. We strongly discourage people from doing that because of public safety. You know, you can't see in, but it is not against the code or the rules. It's actually permitted.
Okay. Even though they're really black, that's permitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I know at one time, years ago, I know Jan Noble had come to the city council and had questioned whether or not, if the windows were blacked out, and they had a call for service, and I think that was specifically at a downtown bar, and if the officers couldn't see in, that there was some concern. Evidently, the city had never done anything with that in their ordinances, but I think that's, might be what Alderwoman Frank is talking about, as I recall.
When people, property owners, businesses call to ask about that, I, I, you know, it is allowed, strongly discourage it. For one thing, if you want people window shopping, they can't see in. Also, how comfortable are your guests if you're a bar or restaurant? If they feel like they're basically trapped inside a building that no one can see in. So we do strongly discourage it, but it is, it is ultimately permitted. And I know at one point with the bars, we were, I think it was looked into to see if it was against a liquor law thing, but unfortunately, it's not. The state doesn't require open viewing. And, you know, there's, there's buildings like Coach's Corner that doesn't even have windows and stuff like that. So the opaque film was to prevent people from bricking in the openings altogether and say, well, you know, I just won't have any openings. At least this opaque film is easily removable and not permanent, such as bricking it, something in. But it is, when we talk to them on the phone, if they call ahead of time, strongly discouraged with them.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Delrose? Okay. Thank you, Gina. Item three, Public Works unfinished business, we have none. Item four, Public Works new business. Item A, Public Works Department update. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple things. Leaf pickup continues. We're, we're on our final round, hopefully. We started on the north side this, today, and we hope to be done, if not done, by Friday, early next week with the entire city one last time around. So hopefully, the weather's been, been really good and cooperating with us, so hopefully we'll have that finished up. The other note is, our bid opening for the drilling of New Well 11 is tomorrow morning. And because of the holiday schedule and the upcoming meeting schedules, I would ask the council's consideration in waiving the committee process and taking it directly to the council meeting on the 18th. That will say- That will save us some time and eliminate perhaps another meeting, and again, that'll save us a couple of weeks' time period to get that underway and get that started. We've been fortunate with, with what's going on currently with the city, that our water usage has been down, mainly to the plant closure, which has been unfortunate, but it's on the, on the one side, but it's been a benefit to us that we haven't had the water pressures that we have, having two wells that are offline currently waiting for this new well to be done. So I don't know if we get a hand vote or whatever, but if that's acceptable to the council members, we'll put that on the agenda for waiving the two-week layover and then taking those results directly to council.
What's the pleasure?
Thank you, and that'll help with our schedule and what we're going to do as far as meetings, upcoming meetings and so forth as well. Otherwise, that's the only two things I got. If there's any questions on anything.
Alderman Snow?
Whatever, what's the latest scoop with the street sweeper that got damaged during the fire?
I just had a phone, phone conversation with the adjuster today. The, we had replacement cost insurance on the sweeper, so they have, they've recommended payment of the actual cash value initially, so we will receive that one, and then at such time, basically, it's going to remain an open item until such time as we actually get a new or a replacement vehicle, sweeper, and then the balance will be due. But the building itself, the structural engineer's gone through it, indicated that there's no structural damage. They've prepared the estimates, cost estimates, to make the necessary repairs. I haven't seen that yet. Hopefully, I'm going to see that in the next day or two, but that's been turned in. Everything that's been turned in so far, or given to them, has been recommended for payment as far as the repairs. The only thing we have left to do is we're still going through the items for the contents of the building, if you will, and each one, every one of those things has to be done on an individual basis. So there's some welders, there's some piece of equipment that's got sustained some through the heat, some electrical damage and so forth, so it's got to be determined if they can be repaired or if they need to be replaced. We need to get those estimates, get that information, get it forwarded to it. So the balance, the majority of the, the heavy items, if you will, have been turned in for payment, so we're just waiting on that process.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Okay? Hearing none. Item B, Mr. Anderson?
Memo on your packet. As you know, we previously talked, and we were fortunate to find a used vehicle, and the council approved that purchase, which we do have now in our possession, so that's a good thing. But we're still short a few vehicles. Our proposed wastewater treatment plant budget for next year, FY25, includes two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of our nineteen seventy-six Alice Chalmers end loader. Due to our current shortage of storm removal vehicles, we have looked at the availability of the end loaders to use in the storm removal process, and we found the following end loaders that are currently available. Westside Tractor Sales, a twenty twenty-three John Deere six twenty-four P. Alta Equipment also has a twenty twenty-three Volvo L ninety-H, and Altaford Cat had a twenty eighteen Caterpillar nine thirty-eight M that were all currently available. All three of these end loaders are in the same size classification and have twice a bucket capacity of the current WWTP loader, which will make sledge handling more efficient. The, both of the twenty twenty-three loaders have the same identical warranty terms, it's a two-year warranty. The John Deere does have two hundred forty hours of demonstrator use. We have a nineteen ninety-nine version of the John Deere six twenty-four in the street department that we've had since new, and we've had excellent, it's been an excellent machine for us. We have rented the John Deere for one month in order to ensure that the machine remains available to us. Our equipment replacement for the wastewater treatment plant is paid for from depreciation line item sixty-one seventeen ninety, which has a current balance of nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And the thought process was, or perhaps that we could rent or rent to own, if we rented the, the, and we went with the John Deere because of the lower cost and our, our experience with the previous John Deere that we currently have still in the street department. Either one of those two, the Volvo, the both twenty-three units, we could rent to own. They would apply, again, same rental terms, they would apply the majority of the percentage cost to the cost of the machine overall, but there is an expense. So if we were to rent, for example, if we rented the John Deere between, from now until May first until the new budget took effect and purchased at that point, it would cost us about seventy-eight hundred dollars in, in rental costs, additional costs, if we did it that way, as opposed to purchasing outright at this time. And because the depreciation account has the funds available, because it is in the upcoming budget, and the, the nineteen seventy-six Alice Chalmers is, it's time for it to go. My recommendation would be to purchase the twenty twenty-three John Deere six twenty-four P end loader from Westside Tractor Sales in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, and the equipment will be paid for from depreciation line item sixty-one seventeen ninety.
Okay. Could I have a motion that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you. And a second, second by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. Any questions, any comments? Nineteen seventy-six, I'd say you got your money's worth.
And, and I say nineteen seventy-six only because that's the best guess. Between the mechanics and our employees and looking, and a couple of manufacturer, even the manufacturing reps, that's their best guess. So yes, it's a vintage mid-seventies machine.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments? Any concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to purchase the twenty twenty-three John Deere six twenty-four P end loader from Westside Tractor Sales in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars from line item, depreciation line item, six one dash one seven nine zero, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Director Anderson, item C?
Again, memo on your packet. Our current, current capital improvement budget for the street department included a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to purchase a one-ton truck and an asphalt roller. The truck and roller had been purchased for a total cost of a hundred and fifty-one thousand and ten dollars, leaving a balance of eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. The truck that we purchased did not include a salt spreader, and we have received the filing proposals for a salt spreader. Automotive Solutions is, was a low proposal at seventy-nine hundred dollars. It's a two-and-a-half yard western slide-in electric spreader for that vehicle, and I would recommend the purchase of the two-and-a-half yard capacity salt spreader from Automotive Solutions in the amount of seventy-nine hundred, hundred dollars to be installed on the street department truck twenty nineteen, and we will do the installation of it in-house ourselves. The salt spreader will be paid for from capital line item forty-one five, seven fifty-two, eighty-two hundred.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Could I get a motion that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, and a second. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions? Any comments? Any concerns regarding that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Brent, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item five, under other, item A, on your desk was a memo from me, and I'll read that I offer my appointment, appointment of Sandra Stevens as alderperson for Ward One. I offer my appointment of Sandra Stevens to fill the vacancy of Ward One alderperson created by Tom Porter's resignation, recommended motion, motion consenting to the appointment of Sandra Stevens as alderperson of the first ward to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Alderman Porter for the remainder of the term. If I could get a motion that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, and a second. Second by Alderwoman Gramkowski. Any questions? Any comments? Any concerns? Alderman Snow?
So my understanding was that there was a Michael Carlisle that had voiced interest in, and around the same time Clayton Stevens had entertained filling the position. I was wondering if you had given him any consideration?
I did. I met with him for about forty-five minutes, maybe an hour, and so I did consider him.
I'll be voting yes.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Any other questions? If not, the motion is for the appointment of Sandra Stevens as alderperson for Ward One. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call?
Okay, do a roll call.
Aye.
Burton?
No.
Fleury?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
No.
McGee?
Nay.
Moha?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Five in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And I believe, pardon me? Thank you. A motion to adjourn by Alderman Snow, second, please. Second by Alderman Fleury, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And anybody want to stay? For the record, we adjourned at six thirty-nine PM. Thank you.